All right, good evening. We're going to call this workshop session in the Louisville City Council of Order. We do have a forum and it is 6:00 PM, Monday, January 23rd. First up on the agenda, it looks like we have a discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Go ahead and go through those. Item E2?
I did have a question about item E2. I think it's our one. This is, A2 is about the prototype IT. So, I apologize if this is silly question. I was reading through the document and I saw what it said. They didn't have the payback of $40,000 aside of that. But if they didn't pay it back by then, they had to pay it back $40,000. I understand what that was trying to tell me.
So I think it's if they didn't sign a lease or they basically didn't stay in Old Town, they would have to pay it back $40,000. If they did stay in Old Town, we were okay with it. The main idea for them when we first established that economic development agreement was we wanted to attract an office building to Old Town. If they're staying in Old Town, we're fine, you know, with them being in Old Town and not having to pay it back. But if not, then we want to get it back.
Okay, so if they sell, they moved to a different place in Old Town? Okay, guys, thank you.
We are still looking for a place. We're trying to help them find a place somewhere in Louisville. If they can't find someplace in Old Town, there's not a lot of office space in that size in Old Town, so it may not be. I'm betting more than likely we're going to get paid back.
Anything else on item 2? Item 3?
I have a question about item 3.
Can I stop you before you ask a question? Because I needed to give you some updates on that. So the developer actually had called us this morning and wants to pull number 3 and number 5 off the agenda right now. They are working through some negotiations with some of their builders and they want to wait till they've got that all tied down. So I just wanted to let you know, we're asking just to pull those off the consent agenda and then to take no action.
Okay.
What if you have questions? I can answer them now.
My question was really more, is this for, does this include the gas monkey year ago?
No, gas monkeys is separate.
Separate.
It's a separate agreement.
So we have a combined graphic, but that's just for our own schedule, which I appreciate because I think it asked.
I'm pretty sure it's your fault.
So I appreciate that. I just want to clarify that it does not include that.
It's a no.
Item 4.
Explain the fitness credits. I'm not sure I understood the fitness hours.
Neil, do you want to explain the fitness hours, how that works?
Yes, so it's based on a ranking. So when they set the standard, depending on how the candidate rose, if he's in the 80th percentile, then they get a certain amount of fitness hours. And so what?
When you say fitness hours, what does that mean?
So it's a leave of time that you can use, like vacation time or holiday time, but it's not compensable as far as money. It's just hours, time off.
Okay, that's what I was missing.
Is it PTM?
It's like a flex.
You have to take it within a year.
Yes, it'd be, Doc, so a flex time, you have to use in the same period, pay period for us. But yes, but it's just unpaid. Paid leave.
Flex plus. Paid leave, you have to take it within that year.
Item 5, we're going to pull. Item 6, we are going to pull.
Yeah, so on this one, you're not going to pull. You're going to, we're asking that council table this to February 6th. And I, this isn't a normal thing for us, but Tech dot gave us a traffic study that showed us the 85th percentile and it came back with having this recommendation. Typically, I mean, we have issues if you don't set your speed limits the same as what Tech dot's telling you and what the traffic study tells you, then you have issues with enforcement. We went and looked at Tech dots, kind of how they did their study, and we think they were doing it during times of peak traffic, which is not necessarily representative. And so we want to challenge that and just give us until the next meeting to be able to discuss that.
Okay, well, that was, I had questions about that as well because I drive Business 121, that stretch of it. And I'm like, I don't see people going, I don't see the justification for lowering it to 50. So I had the same thought. I wonder if they're doing it when it's really, really crowded, especially with a new light. You know, there's more traffic and people are going slower.
And I wanted to see if Sarah wanted to have anything else she wanted to add.
So it was approved by the Transportation Board a while before I started working here. But I went through the documents that Tech dot sent and I noticed they have been studying this in a short period of time and they have only looked at about 120 vehicles, which is like maybe 10 minutes, 15 minutes, I can't tell, for such a corridor that we have. And it does not really comprehensive the study. So we decided if, decided to go and study ourselves and with reasonable documents, challenge what they have been trying to enforce these. Because I drive that corridor twice a day and I agree with you, but there are times that the average 85 percentile may be 50 miles, but it's because of the congestion. In what we call it free flow speed, the free flow speed is higher than maybe 60 or 65.
It's absolutely higher than 60. It's 70.
So Tech dot just did a drive-by, basically?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we will do the study based on the standards that we have for traffic, at least full 24-hour study in a weekday with the normal condition, weather condition. And then when we get the results back, we will let the council know.
Well, that's great. We'll have our first 85 mile per hour road in Louisville.
Let me ask one question. So if we move to February 6th, is that enough time to do all that?
Yes, yes. Unfortunately tomorrow, we have rain and a sleet. We don't want to, hopefully everything will be dry and sunny before we start our study, but hopefully we can get everything ready by then.
Wonderful.
We don't have any reports and we do not have any closed session. Is that correct?
We do not have any closed session. I did want to, for a report, just wanted to introduce Tad Phillips. He's our new HR director.
Hello.
So Tad has over 20 years' experience in HR. He recently came from Georgetown with, I think, eight years there. Is that correct? Eight years? Look at my memory. That's good. But we're super excited. He was a coup to get him to come here. He's a big hitter in not just the metroplex, in all the states, so we're really excited to have him.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Excited to be here.
Claire, on these two that we're going to pull, you just want us to, no action?
Yeah, you can take no action. Move on.
Anything else? I don't have anything else.
So we're pulling 2 from consent and then we're tabling?
We're tabling item 6 until February 6th. Well, with that, we have our single-family rental inspection program to review and... Super. Take it away.
Can I just stop? So Mayor, Council, we're really interested in bringing this back because this is an ordinance that has been on our to-do list for a while. We've gotten direction from Council to make these changes. We've implemented a lot of the changes that we could, but we needed to formalize this into an ordinance form. This was pre-COVID. I'm going to blame it on COVID. I know you always joke that everyone blames everything on COVID. Well, I'm blaming this on COVID.
But it's the only thing that has been blamed more than God, is COVID.
But I did want, I didn't want to take an ordinance to Council without, I think there are three of you that were not on Council at the time, without you guys at least hearing what the prior direction was with Council and so you're not hit flat-footed on this. So that's good.
So that's actually, the first slide is just kind of picking up where we left off with what the single-family rental program was prior to February 2nd of 2020. And there's some issues kind of with the way that the program was functioning. There was an ordinance, there was a registration application required for the rental permit. And there was also a $50 fee placed on the water bill that was refunded after the permit issuance. But the way that we were finding these rental properties was actually with the initiation of a rental water bill. So also in addition to that, the inspections that were being performed in the Building Services Department were exterior and interior inspections. So when we looked at these inspections, it noted that sometimes we had difficulty gaining entry to the interior. And so a lot of these inspections were not finished out. And so, you know, we kind of had a hard time identifying all the properties. You know, the renter was told to fill out information on a Google spreadsheet. And so we weren't really capturing all of the rental properties at that point in time. And also that responsibility of scheduling that inspection was on the tenant as opposed to the actual property owner. And again, difficulty to gain entrance to the interior inspections. So direction from the council retreat, you know, our goal was to set up a zero-stop shop to track these single-family rentals. A lot of the information to help us identify this was already at our fingertips. And so just to utilize that information to look at inspections. The registration termination was to not have an annual registration fee. We didn't necessarily want to spend time tracking down owners for a registration fee for basically information that we already had. And removing that $50 fee because there really wasn't a way to charge that effectively. We just wanted to get out there and do code enforcement on these locations that we knew were rental properties. And then, you know, a mandatory focus on exterior inspections and also having a way to re-inspect these properties if there was no change in the water bill after five years. Also, in the draft ordinance that will be coming in February to Council, there'll be a reference to the most current city's property maintenance code. And that's one of the codes that we routinely update. So we're currently under the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code and getting ready to move to the 2021. And then also to provide an educational campaign for those folks that are renters, to let them know that we do provide interior inspections upon request. And those flyers are available on our city website in English and in Spanish. And, you know, we, in 2020, in February, we moved that program to code enforcement. And so, a little bit on how... So a little bit on how we track the data, because I think it's really impressive on how we're capturing this information. And a lot of help from our business analysts and our IT department on how we're actually doing this. So anytime a utility bill is flagged as a rental property, there's a sequel report kind of jumps into our software and water billing and pulls that information, assigns it to our code enforcement officer that has that zone. So basically, you could have a new utility bill initiated by a renter, at the end of that day or the following day, already have a single-family rental inspection completed. And, you know, that violation notice is already off to that owner, wherever he or she may live or that corporation. So, you know, very, very effective program in the way that works. But, you know, we wanted to take it to the next level and make sure that, you know, just because there's a water bill that's flagged as a rental property, there's a lot of other ways for us to identify rental properties. So we're utilizing appraisal district data from Denton County. And Denton, if a parcel's identified as a residential state property, and basically this particular report is jumping into those appraisal districts and using A, B, and C as criteria to help us identify. So all these have to, we have to check the box. So mismatched address of where Decad's sending correspondence as opposed to the address in Louisville, and the property would not have a homestead exemption. So that gives us a pretty good idea that this is a rental property and also pulling out like any new construction that might be found through this. And then another filter is just using our form through our website. So if an owner calls us and says, hey, you know, I know you have a program. What do I need to do? Just schedule your inspection. Or we get a complaint from a resident or somebody who's renting a property wants an inspection, they can go to the link on our webpage and initiate an inspection that way. And then they also have the option to do an interior inspection at that point. So since 2023, we've done, that number's changing all the time, but we're over 4,800 inspections. And, you know, those were flagged through our water billing department and through CAD data. And so, you know, I feel like it's been pretty efficient just this particular year.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure.
Do these numbers, would they capture short-term rentals?
I was going to ask that.
Me too.
And is there a way to do that if they don't?
So currently, we're not able to require any registration or anything special for short-term rentals. But we know where those locations are and they're basically done as part of a normal residential code suite, so.
I'll add to that. So we actually do, I can't remember if it was the same retreat, but we do have software that our IT department has.
Host compliance.
Host compliance, thank you. Which basically is very Big Brother and takes pictures of everything that's online and then kind of cross-references it to find locations in the city. Because they don't put the address on until you sign it up. And so we have a report that we regularly run. I think Council had asked us, the last time we presented was, if it gets, if we see a large uptick in these, bring it back to us if we need to start talking about further regulation. But it was such a small amount. The numbers that were there, a lot of them that were there were, you were seeing, they were just rooms being rented out in a person's house, which is a little different than, you know, the party house or something like that that you'd be worried about.
At the time we looked at it, folks that were actually renting out their entire house as a short-term rental, there were only about 40 or so that were doing that. But we continue to try and monitor.
Do you all monitor like complaints or whatever within the system itself, like within the feedback system or Airbnb and stuff?
We're not monitoring them from that perspective. But to Ms. Powell's point, the way the host compliance software looks is it's looking at any B and Bs that are out there, right? And then trying to cross-reference those properties so we'll be aware that that does actually exist. But are we actively going out to all the different sites? No way.
And we do get occasional, I think Richard gets a lot of the, if we do get them, we get complaints about, you know, there's an Airbnb down the street, but they're very few in between.
Because I have one. They only don't have one.
Those are the best kind of.
I know. We know now. Well, yeah, you know now, but if everybody knows I have one, that's when I stop having the security issues.
But any violation or any concern that would be a short-term rental, they'd be handled with code enforcement, just like any other residential property would. Because we're getting all this really great data and tracking all this information, it's giving us a lot of information about what Louisville's looking like. And it'll be interesting to see how this data trends throughout the years. But looking at the total parcels, this is every single parcel in Louisville, including Castle Hills. So all of Louisville now, 30,000 parcels. That includes also commercial vacant lots. And then parcels that are identified as residential, they could be home-owned properties or rental properties, 25,800 plus. We've identified about 4,800 rental properties. And surprisingly, that represents a little over 18% of total residential housing stock in Louisville. Home-owned properties, over 80%.
That is nowhere near the numbers I just pulled up and got from the census.
I think you were looking at rental, but it could have been units. So like if you were talking about.
That's just single families.
It's just single families.
Yeah, so keep in mind that 53% of our residents live in multifamily right now. But of the rest of the population, that represents, you know, these residential, 25,000 residential parcels, 20% of those are being rented.
I'll be curious to see how this all ties in to the housing study.
But it's all on a GIS map. Code can use this information to kind of figure out when it last had an inspection. Is it a rental property? Is it not? So this is just information that we have that we can continue to use and build a database.
One of the things that came up when I was running was the, somebody was very concerned about the number of where, who owned these? Was it all out of state, but all owned in-state, local here? And I've done some research and then Claire provided some information recently.
The foreign ownership is what you're talking about?
Yeah, foreign as in anywhere outside of Texas.
Yeah, same lines.
And I'm just, I didn't see it. I did my own study for it and didn't see it in the study that we reviewed. So something like 80% plus is owned by someone in the DFW area. So I'm not seeing, and I'm asking if you saw something differently, but I'm not seeing a concern that out-of-area folks are driving these property rental stuff.
No, we are seeing, there's a slide that kind of talks about who owns what, corporations, and I'll talk a little bit more, but we have a pretty good idea about what's going on there, too. Just looking at fiscal year 2022, we completed about 1,300 SFR inspections, identified 60 violations. And, you know, the majority of these are passing the inspection. And this is our opportunity, not only to get inoperative vehicles or high grass and weeds or unsightly, but, you know, it's, maybe the house needs painted, maybe the fence is falling. You know, there's a lot of other things, broken windows, you know, roof replacement. So single-family rental is looking at the things that we would look at a normal code suite, but we're basically initiating that inspection at the time we know it's around. And you can see, you know, the amount of inspections that are being done. There's a handful that require a re-inspection and kind of, you know, what we're seeing for mostly grass and weeds and unsightly. But those are the types of violations that we're seeing.
Those 67 violations, 67 individual homes, 32 individual homes. Is it more likely that if they've got one, they've got two or three?
Trying to think how that works. They could be multiple violations on one piece of property, so.
Total properties.
Oh, it's total properties? 67 properties?
67 out of the 1,285.
So we may have, we may have 67 properties, but there may be multiple cases or viola, you know, on that.
So it's 67 violators?
That's right.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
So talking about who the owners are and what we're kind of gaining from the data that we're receiving, and again, some special help from our IT friends. You know, the locations of owners, you know, of the folks that are renting properties, those 30% of those live within Louisville. 55% of those live outside of Louisville, but in Texas. 14% in the US and just a small amount international ownership outside of the US. The corporations identified by rental properties. And so, you know, to pull that information, we're looking at data that's in the appraisal district where that alternate mailing or that ownership information is an LLC, LP or Inc., just to identify. You know, this is, at least they've set up some sort of LLC to identify that. So we tend to think that those are maybe at a corporation level and then 68% owned by an individual. So some really good data that we're collecting there on that.
Let me ask you a question real quick. So when you think corporations, a lot of times they'll conjure up images of thousands of people all flying out. I have rental properties. I put up an analysis to protect myself. It could be one person.
So in that case, yeah, I mean, we have to keep in mind that, you know, corporation could mean even somebody that has a couple of properties that just created an LLC. Kind of taking a look at what our webpage looks like. You know, you can submit a request through a Laserfish form through our webpage. We also have information about internal inspections in English and Spanish on our website. But everything's pretty much updated there, kind of tells what sort of things that we look for on the inspections, just to give people basic information about the program. Next steps is to come to Council, as I stated earlier, with updated ordinance in February. And with all this really awesome data that we have, to continue to utilize metrics to, you know, set goals for our single-family rental program, to continue to use GIS mapping to, you know, both, using both of those to monitor the effectiveness of our program. And, you know, one thing that changed with the pandemic was folks initiate their rental utility billing through a Laserfish form online. And so, yeah, we have a link to our webpage, but also providing them with information on internal inspections. Whenever that utility billing is created is just one of our goals here in the next couple of weeks. But we hope to have everything wrapped up and straightened out here in February.
So Mayor, this has really been a success story for us, changing this, coming up with new processes. I did also want to thank Jackie Davis and his crew sending this over to code enforcement. We were not getting compliance before and we are really making great improvements in compliance at this point, so. But I wanted to see if you guys had any questions. This is more for information purposes so that you weren't, you know, surprised by the ordinance.
Having seen this from its inception, having the conversations about what was working and what wasn't working, being able to integrate a lot more data, I feel much more confident about the program today than I ever have. I'm excited that what we're doing here is protecting the housing stock of the city. And we're protecting folks that choose to rent.
We're protecting the tenants.
Yeah. And so being able to put a floor on the quality of what we have in the city, I think, is really important. And it's exciting that we have the tools to get there, so thank you.
To my knowledge, where they only say that has a single-family rental program, it's not charging some sort of registration fee. So it's awesome that we're able to do that and still go about our normal business with code enforcement. So it's been good.
Super. Thank you. We have one more presentation. We're going to be speaking on the Business 121 Corridor Study. Scope.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore and Council members. Planning staff is very excited to start the planning process for the SH 121 Business Corridor. As you all know, this is a very important corridor to Louisville. Not only is it very lengthy, it's eight miles in length. It has very, carries very high traffic volumes and it has very high visibility to the traveling public. We think once we complete the planning process, we'll have some great tools that the city can use to really facilitate major changes for the good on that corridor. Very similar to what the city has done with the I-35E corridor. As you may recall, several planning projects were done on I-35, which led to the adoption of the I-35 Corridor Overlay District, which has been an incredible tool for the city. That overlay has been in effect now for five years and we have seen some major successful redevelopments along that corridor. And we'll continue getting more. It's not something that happens overnight on every property, but it's gradual. And as you look through time, we will make some great strides. And I know we'll make those same great strides on Business 121. So with that, I will turn it over to Planning Manager Michelle Berry, and she will go over the details of the scope that will be found in the RFP that's upcoming here soon.
Yeah, so the purpose of this is just to kind of touch base with you guys before we publish the request for qualifications, to make sure that I've captured everything that's a priority for Council so we can hire the right consultant to prepare the plan and the documents. So just going to go a little bit about the history of the corridor, some of the identified issues, opportunities, some of our previous efforts to kind of analyze the corridor, and then talk about specifically the proposed plan and what we put in the RFQ. So Business 121 was originally part of 121, but that changed in 1999 when they built the Sam Rayburn Tollway and that became 121 and this became Business 121. I thought it was interesting that it was originally designated in 1928, so it's been there for a long time. With the opening of DFW Airport in '74, we experienced a lot of growth along the corridor, specifically in the '70s and '80s. However, our first general development ordinance wasn't adopted until 1989. And so a lot of what was built there was built before we had much in the way of development regulations. So most commercial development along the corridor is legal and law conforming based on our current ordinances as they've adapted over time. So just here's the corridor highlight, just going past Old Town, just to give you an idea of what that looked like in 1968. Some of the issues that we've identified are the lack of bike and pedestrian infrastructure and safety. Some of the issues that we've identified are the lack of bike and pedestrian infrastructure and safety, also safety for vehicles. We've identified that there's higher rates of crime along portions of the corridor, particularly related to certain land uses. There is also a perception of the corridor as unsafe and undesirable, even in places where it really truly isn't as unsafe as it's perceived to be. We do have legal nonconforming structures and uses. There's a lack of lighting, which contributes to that lack of safety. Access management is a problem. There are a lot of curb cuts. Before, we started requiring cross-access and TechDOT had the separation distances and so forth. So there's a lot of curb cuts on portions of 121. And then there's also a lack of maintenance and debris cleanup. It is a TechDOT highlight, but we want to make sure that we're addressing all of those issues as well. We do have heavy trucking traffic that comes through the corridor, so we've got to be aware of that. We also want to be aware of all the lights and the signals, the timings, the traffic flows, because that still is important. We do have informal, we call them, mid-block crossings, because there are a lot of places where people need to cross the street, where there's not an intersection, there's not a safe way to do it. You see it specifically south of thirty-five, the Bel Air, kind of southwest Parkway area, you see a lot of that. I drive that area quite a lot. This area's also been designated as a recognized food desert. We know there's areas where drainage maintenance is a problem, and the overgrowth in some of those drainage areas is becoming a problem. We also have areas where property maintenance is probably not meeting the standard that we'd like for it to. Aesthetics are an issue. We also have in some areas excess pavement, which contributes to the urban heat island, and it's also just a lack of productive use of the property, right? And then we have uses on the corridor that might be legal nonconforming or not that impact nearby properties in a negative manner. And so we want to look at all those things as we go through this study. We do think there's opportunities, though, to create a visual entry to the Green Centerpiece or the Lake Lewisville Environmental Learning Area. That is a huge portion of the corridor on the north side, that's kind of beautiful. And so, is there a way to accentuate that in some way? We also know with the Corporate Drive Extension, we're adding another east-west connection from the Sam Rayburn Tollway to thirty-five, so we're likely going to see some changing traffic patterns. And what can we expect with that? We want to work to continue building partnerships with TechDOT, Lewisville ISD, Denton County Transportation Authority, our apartment communities, and also just all the business owners and property owners on the corridor. We want people to be invested in it. We want to beautify the city, and we want to change the perception of people that drive through Lewisville on a daily basis but may never stop. And we also want to position ourselves in a good spot for federal and state funding so that we can implement some of these projects. So those are the opportunities we see. In twenty thirteen, we did kind of our first assessment. In twenty eighteen, we went back and looked at that again and updated it. We found that a lot of properties were legal nonconforming. They had just been approved at a time where they didn't have to meet our current landscaping standards. There weren't any building material standards, so they just didn't meet them. In twenty eighteen, we also did the ten-minute walk to a park through the Urban Land Institute grant, specifically for the Triangle area, but that touched on this corridor quite a bit. And so we'll be using that information as well. And then council added it to the budget this year to fund this study. And so we really want to take advantage of that and come up with a good plan. We want action steps. Our goals are to have action steps to improve safety. That's kind of number one. We want to encourage reinvestment and redevelopment along the corridor. There's a lot of areas that have high traffic volumes that are really primed for redevelopment and reinvestment. We want to see how we can encourage that. And we also want to beautify the corridor and do what we can to make it a more attractive place, as well as a safer place to be. So those are some of the three main proposed goals. And the scope is the entire length of the corridor, so it's a long distance. That's a little over eight miles. It has several different context zones. So we're proposing to break it down into at least three sub-areas that may or may not be exactly what you see on this map here. They'll probably change some based on the context. And we want to analyze the land use of all parcels that are within a two-hundred-foot buffer of the right-of-way. So that's kind of the scope that we're looking at for the study. Our anticipated timeframe is to publish the request for qualifications next month in February, hopefully select a consultant and sign a contract the following month in March, kick off the project in the spring. We do anticipate it will be about a twelve-to-eighteen-month project, so to adopt a plan hopefully in the second quarter of twenty twenty-four. But obviously, that timeline will be further refined with the consultant, the plan that they bring for us. Our proposed deliverables that we're going to ask for are actionable, short and long-term steps for physical changes to the corridor, as well as policy improvements. We would like for one or two catalytic sites for reinvestment to be analyzed, likely near the intersection of thirty-five and 121, as that's probably the most primary for redevelopment. We would like to see concepts for pedestrian, bike, and traffic safety improvements, and we'll have to work with TechDOT to really get those vetted out to something that we know can be implemented. We would like to explore the idea of doing an ARC GIS urban model, which is a really kind of fun 3D model and a visualization tool, so that we can see what policy changes would be, and then also looking at redevelopments and seeing how we can visualize those on the corridor. And then we also want specific funding and grant strategies to come out of this plan so we know how we can move forward and where we have opportunities to find funds to implement it. So that's my quick summary, and I've been going fairly quickly, but I wanted to open it up for discussions with the council. Are there any other issues, priorities, any other goals that you have or specific deliverables?
I have two questions.
Yes.
One, are we considering of looking at the possibility of taking it off-system?
It could be part of the plan, but it would be very.
Well, I just, you know, because obviously, if we continue to keep it on-system, we have, you know, one set of, yeah, one set of options, but, you know, it's a lot more limited.
In twenty eighteen with the Triangle area, I know that idea was talked about. It would be quite expensive to take it off-plan.
I assume it would be. I'm just curious if that's going to be factored into the study at all, saying, well, this would be one option that we could kind of just vaguely look at so that we would at least have an idea of what that would look like.
The way I imagining, imagine it is going to be exactly what you're saying. So if we keep it on-system, this is what flexibility we have. If we take it off-system, this is what flexibility we have. And then, we're really wanting to have Tech, a member of TechDOT be part of the. The kind of staff group that works on it. Staff group that's going to work through it so that we can try to get by in a long way.
I just really want some wrecking balls. I want a lot of wrecking balls.
Hold on, I still have another question. So I know years ago, and it has probably been talked about multiple times, there was some discussion about realigning the intersection of Mill and Texas and all of that. Would that, I don't know what the status of that is, but would that be also part of this study?
That's already, yes, David, it's on.
Yeah, that project has already been funded through TechDOT.
Oh, it is, oh.
So we're looking at possibly twenty-twenty-five for that project.
Okay.
So they're right now in right-of-way acquisition for that realignment.
Okay, so that's already happening.
So we would, obviously, we pay that to the consultant, that would be included in the plan.
So this is not something I've had, I had a lot of time to think about since, so, twenty sixteen, this has been on my radar. But one thing, Business 121 going toward five forty-four, like that, we really need to find some way to get two more lanes in there at some point, because I've driven it. At night, it's not a big deal, but like during rush hour, it's pretty packed. And then we have more apartments that are coming up over there, that's going to be a problem. And then you add corporate in there, that's going to be a challenge, too. So that may not be a part of necessarily what you're doing with the visioning around that, but that's something that we need to keep in the forethought to start talking to TechDOT. Hey, I mean, because we can't take it off-system, we can't do it ourselves, that's going to be an expensive proposition. But that's something that we need to think. I like the phasing and the three parts. I think that makes it madder for bite size. I like the 3D imaging so that developers and future partners can see what the potential could be, and we can work with them. I hate to sound like TJ, but the marketing will decide what businesses will come in there. So we don't want to get, we don't want to get in the way of that. I hate to sound like him, but. But it's a true statement. We got to let that fall where it may, where it's going to fall. But I love the idea. I think it's been a long time coming. It's something that we, you know, we've done, we've done a lot of work in Old Town, and we're starting to see the fruits of that. So now that this, you know, unfortunately, for anybody watching, this is going to be a few-years project. This is not going to be an overnight thing, but I think this is a step in the right direction to start off.
Well, I have a follow-up thought to that, too, because I, I, my thought about it was that corporate might help the traffic situation on 121, Business 121, right over there by Lila. And I, I don't know, I have concerns about what would happen with Lila if we added a six-lane thoroughfare there. But, you know, I don't, I assume all of that is going to be.
It would be factored in, yeah, and that's part of why we mentioned the corporate extension, because I think you're correct. I think it might relieve some of the traffic that's currently on 121. But we want the consultant to kind of look at that a bit more and tell us what they think that impact is going to be. And that's, you know, we're including the land uses on the corridor, so hopefully we can kind of project a little bit of what we think that the traffic demands are. And we do want to look at, you know, congestion and traffic flow and make sure that things keep moving.
I want to take this opportunity to be vulnerable in the room. What is on-system and off-system? I don't know what that means.
TechDOT, TechDOT maintained, TechDOT road, and if you take it off, it becomes.
Okay, thank you so much.
So make sure it used to be on-system, but now it's not.
I tried to figure it from context, but I just wasn't getting it.
If it's on, they control. If it's off, we do.
Okay.
Along with all the responsibility that comes with it.
And the cost.
Yes.
The maintenance cost.
I assume that the, on the, I'd say on the west side, this study will take into back on motorcycle accidents and how that relates to businesses along that side as well.
Yeah, I worked with our police department to pull up some preliminary just crash statistics data for the whole corridor. And there was about fourteen hundred crashes in the three-year study time that they gave me. So we do want to look at the safety primarily, and like that was the main goal, to have some safety improvements for pedestrians, bikes, and vehicles, because there are a lot of crashes.
That, 121, I mean, at one point in the sixty, in the seventies, wasn't it chief, the number-one killer in the state at one time? At one time, before, you know, we, it was one of the main, and it's people, and that was, that was two lanes. Isn't that right, Jackie?
Yeah.
And that was just two lanes then. And they still drive like crazy, even though they got six. If they can, if they can, on 121, if they can cross the median, they will cross the median.
At night, wearing dark clothes.
Exactly. It scares me.
It is, yeah. I drive that road frequently in the evening hours, and you see people, and it's scary.
I did a ride-along a couple of years ago, and the officer and I almost hit somebody. Because they were completely in black clothing, just bumping across 121, loaded to the gills with alcohol, probably.
I've seen cars, though, too, recently with some of the construction, thinking they're getting over to turn, and then they just go off the side of it because they're thinking something's a turn lane, when it's clearly marked with those big orange things.
Well, I'm excited. A couple of points that you brought up that I think bear a little bit of emphasis. I love the idea of re-looking at that 121 Mill Bel Air section down in there. I think that's really an interesting focal point, opportunity. So that idea of two or three of them along the corridor, I think, is a great, a great way to visualize that. All of the curb cuts, I think, is a key thing that we need to be able to change or figure out how to change. I mean, it is, it is the wild west on this side. Everybody just pops off, you know, it's like rolling off into a barn ditch. It's, it's, it's like thirty-five was when everybody just pulled off to go hang out at the lake. And it's still that way for a road that runs at, you know, sixty to eighty-five miles an hour. So I think if we can at least work with TechDOT on those pieces to improve safety with all the traffic crossings, I think that'd be critical. Great stuff.
Thank you so much.
Staff, do we have anything further? All right, then we're going to call the workshop closed, and we will start our regular meeting here in about fifteen minutes. All right, good evening, and welcome to this meeting of the Lewisville City Council. We're going to call this regular session to order. It is seven PM, Monday, January twenty-third, and we do have a quorum. First up, we do have invocation with Mayor Protem Jones.
Please rise for a moment of silent contemplation and prayer. Thank you.
If you'll please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the U.S.
Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. First thing on tonight's agenda is a presentation of our 2023 Spirit of Lewisville Award honorees. And I have Mr. James Kunkke here to take it away.
Now's great. Okay, Mayor and council, thank you. It really is a pleasure to be here this evening for the annual presentation of our Spirit of Lewisville Awards. This is something that we started about four years ago, five years ago now, and it's recognition of the fact that we use a lot of volunteers for a lot of purposes in the city. And we value our volunteers. They help us so much in so many ways. But every once in a while, there's a situation where a volunteer, individual, group, or business goes above and beyond and works directly with the city, hand-in-hand, on projects that are important and that we need in our community, but we, as a city government, could not perform on our own. We either don't have the resources, or the expertise, or the connections. And without that individual, business, or organization, that project would not have happened, and that benefit would not have come to Lewisville. So this was set up as a way to recognize those truly cream-of-the-crop volunteer individuals and organizations that have made their contributions to the city and to the community at large. And we do have two recipients this year. We usually try to be a little bit deceptive, a little bit circumspect, but what we found is our volunteers tend to be smarter than us in many cases, and they figure it out. But we still try to bring them up here under somewhat false pretenses. But I'm going to have the pleasure of presenting our first recipient, and I'm going to ask Jackie Shaw to join me at the podium. So as she comes forward, I'll tell you a bit about why she is receiving this award tonight. And you probably already, many of you were involved in this. So Jackie's very active at Westside Baptist Church and other agencies. She's been very active in the Martin Luther King programs for the school district. She was a part of the Listen, Learn, Lead Mayor's Commission. But what she's here for goes beyond all of that. Last year, Jackie saw a need at a local historic cemetery, the Champions Macedonia Cemetery, that was in need of some tender loving care. The previous caretakers had gotten older to the point they weren't able to keep up. And rather than look at it and complain, rather than go into social media and say, somebody oughta, somebody shoulda, Jackie did. She reached out to volunteer groups through her church, through the community, through the schools, and she arranged a cleanup at that cemetery on Martin Luther King Junior Day, a day of service in honor of a man of service. And I don't know what she expected, but she got a couple hundred volunteers that came out and stayed extra and got a lot of work done. But it's an ongoing project, going on again this year, and had hundreds more volunteers come out and cleaned that cemetery up. It's a historic cemetery. It's important to Lewisville. The city could not have done that alone. And it's a project that we are so very pleased that she involved us in, and we are so very pleased to be able to participate and support her. She is receiving this because the work she did is so important and valuable, and we could not have done it without her. And so I present to you our first reward recipient for the evening, Jackie Shaw. And if you would like, since, we told her we brought her here to speak, so I'm going to let her speak.
Okay, I'm going to fight back tears, because when you cry, you can't think. I am surprised. I am grateful. I am honored. I prepared things to come here and thank you all for partnering with us for the cemetery cleanup. And also, as you know, me sending you constantly emails and reminding about MLK Day far as it being the evening of the North Texas thirtieth anniversary of the MLK celebration that happened that night, I am the media liaison for that. So to get you all out, I want to say thank, thank you to each and every one of you for coming out and participating with us, and also partnering with us in that event as well. You showed up for both events that morning at ten o'clock, and then you showed up at six o'clock and stayed until the end, and we appreciate you so much. o'clock and stayed until the end, and we appreciate you so much for all that you have done, we really do. I am blown away. I have a certificate that I want to present to you as the council for your help in, in everything that you, you've done. Last year, when, when I got the phone call about the cemetery, two days before Christmas, so we had less than 20 days to put the, the MLK National Day of Service cleanup for Champion Macedonia Cemetery. And Mr. Brandon Jones, Councilman Jones, was one of the people on the committee along with Ms. Mitchell. So I called her and said, what can we do? How can we do it? She said, let's meet in my chamber. And people came out and they showed up and we had over 400 people to show up on that first, that first time. This time, we had more people to show up, more groups, more organizations, and we had over 700 people to show up. And the same media crew that came out last year came out this year without us contacting. They said, Jackie, we'll be there. And so I'm so grateful that the city of Lewisville gets behind their citizens when it comes to a, a project that is wanting to be moved forward to beautify the city of Lewisville. So I thank you for that. Also, by us getting national recognition, there is a cemetery magazine that we're in for the cemetery cleanup and Ms. Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell and Councilman Jones, you are in this. So, and I bought this for you and I will give Ms. Ms. Mitchell hers as well. So, and it came out of New Jersey, so the word went all the way to New Jersey of what we're doing and Washington. So I've gotten phone calls and emails from all over the world pretty much, but I want to say thank you. But can I take a picture with, with you guys with this and this? Is that possible? Quickly? I'm sorry. Oh my goodness. I love the city of Lewisville.
Okay. Can someone, you want to take, you'll send it to me? Okay. Okay. Yeah, just one. I'm, I'm a picture.
You want to step up here?
Yes, I would say toward the dais.
Thank you so much. I am so sorry. Let me get it. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Mayor, Council, park fans, I have the honor of being able to tell you about the second Spirit of Lewisville Award that we are going to present tonight. And this is more for a big group that's helped the city of Lewisville attain its goal in protecting and preserving the green centerpiece and extending the green. So, and you know, I like, Jackie, I'm going to have to fight back my tears because I get so excited about this kind of stuff, you know. But, so the Elm Fork Chapter of the Texas Master Naturalist has been a key partner with the city of Lewisville's pursuit of preserving the green centerpiece and extending the green. Not only are they key partners with us at the, at Lila, at the Lewisville Lake Environmental Learning Preserve, serving on the board, the Friends of Lila Board there, serving as our main thrust of volunteers, helping with tree maintenance. They partnered with UNT and LISD to plant over 10,000 plants during the Plantathon in, in 2002 out at Lila. But they've also been key proponents of the parks department's expansion of preserves and, and park areas. They have been key to 1.25 million dollars worth of grants that we've received from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, not only for Thrive Nature Park, but for the future Glory Park. They've helped us establish restoration plans for Thrive Nature Park and Lila. They lead nature walks out at Thrive Nature Park, teaching people about the value of not only what they see in that park, but the bio swells across the street and how they too can make sure that they extend the green into their own homes by helping us with the Roots for Wings program that's, that's underway. It is, goes without saying that there is no way that we could have been recognized as the Native Prairie Association's first City Land Steward Award winners without their help. So I would like to welcome Jan DeFrids, Sue Yost, and Scott Keister up to receive the Spirit of Lewis Award, Lewisville Award.
It was protected, because I know you have a camera on, so...
I'm actually going to give it to Madam President.
Uh-oh, my God.
I'm just, I'm just a minion.
Oh, yes, I'm getting them in.
Madam President, that's her job.
Thank y'all so much. This is just terrific for us and we really, really appreciate it. We love Lewisville and the work that we've done here, we're very, very proud of. We have, well, we had over 30,000 service hours last year and a large chunk of them were right here within the confines of the city of Lewisville. We cover Denton, Wise, and Cook Counties and without going into too much detail, there are three words to say about our relationship with you folks, and that is that Lewisville gets it. So we're very, very thankful and appreciative. We'll continue to try to do what we can to conserve nature and make nature an important part for your residents and we thank you for the recognition and we'll make sure everybody in our 200-plus volunteer organization will get a chance to see this. So thank you very much.
And Mayor and Council, that concludes our presentation for the evening. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming out here and, and you know, I want to just quickly say that you all are doing the work. You know, I talk about communities all the time and, and how important it is to be able to grow communities, but communities only work when people invest in them and you all invest in them with your time and your treasure and I thank you for that. All right, next up we have, I don't think Jackie wants to talk on, on this one. I think that was the way to get her here, so. We're going to move on to item E, the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. They, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay. Staff is requesting that consent agenda items three and five are both to be pulled from the consent agenda and no action to be taken, Council. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve all items as presented with the exception of agenda, agenda items E3 and E5.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Items three and five, there will be no action taken.
For item six, Mayor, I move that we table this to February 6th.
Okay, I've got a motion to table item six.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Yeah, February 6th, yes. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Reports, Councilmember Meredith, would you mind?
Not at all. I'm going to do the library...
Make sure you got your green light on.
Okay, so I'm going to do library activities and also the Lewisville Grand Theater tonight, both. Library activities for the week. Smitten with books, adult winter reading program now through Monday, February 6th. Volunteer income tax assistance, VITA, for adults every Thursday, January 26th through April 13th, 5:00 to 7:30 PM, assistance provided on a first come, first served basis at the computer lab. Family Storytime for families with children of all ages, Saturday, January 28th, 11:00 to 11:30 at the Bennett Programmer Room and a ticket is required. Miniature Basing for adults and teens 13 plus, Saturday, January 28th, 11:00 to 2:00. Registration is required at the Hive Makerspace. And Lewisville Grand Theater activities, Rhapsody in Blue presented by Lewisville Lake Symphony, February 10th. Texas Tunes, Jackie Vincent, the first one of the year, February 11th. Texas Tunes, Alejandro Escovedo, if you haven't seen him, I would highly recommend go see him, presented by the city of Lewisville, February 17th, which has been rescheduled from January 21st. Acoustic Jam Sessions presented by Visual Art League of Lewisville on Fridays. And Art Talk, Nature's Vibrations by David Blow, presented by Visual Art League, February 14th. Exhibitions, Abstraction presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, January 7th through February 4th. And Living the Dream, It Takes a Team, Art and Photography Exhibition presented by the Committee to Commemorate MLK Day, January 21st through February 22nd. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, City Secretary. Thanks for being here, Officer, appreciate you. Anything out of our planning department?
Nothing, Mayor.
Right.
No. No report.
Mayor, just to give you all an update on the lake level, it's at 520.17, which is just about two feet below the normal pool level.
Thank you.
Fire administration has made the move, so we are now located at 1955 Lakeway Drive and as of this evening, Fire Station 1 has relocated to 1150 McGee Lane. So the old central station is now vacant and we're operating out of our new facilities.
Thank you, sir. Officer comments?
No. Just a couple of quick things. First off, I wanted to thank the, the police department for enhanced traffic patrol across the city over the past month or so. Really nice numbers, appreciate you guys being out there. Secondly, I also wanted to acknowledge the, the, yesterday was the first day of the Lunar Lunar New Year, Chinese New Year, and it is the year of the rabbit, specifically the water rabbit. So it runs in a 60-year cycle and we are water rabbit and this is the year of hope, prosperity, and letting go. That's it.
Councilmember Green?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jones?
I just want to welcome Keith Marvin back. Nobody gives the water level report like he does. Also, I want to, for any of our residents who have any, any issues that they would want to adopt a pet, you want to know what's going on in the city, you want to send a request to the city department, you have the power in your phone at our Lewisville Texas app. You can get it on your iTunes store or Google Play. I use it all of the time. It's, you get feedback, you get an email once you put a request in and you get follow-up on that. So if there's something that you're interested in, you can do it, you have the power of your phone, you can do it and knock it out and you don't have to do phone calls, you don't have to figure out the website, it's all in one, one spot. That's all I have, Mayor.
Nothing to report, just accolades on our new deputy city manager promotion and the hiring of our HR director. Where are you? And so forth. That's it. Y'all have done, y'all continue to do a great job, just keep it up.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank a few people out in the audience that did a great job on our groundbreaking, obviously our police department, admin, fire admin staff. James Kunkie was integral to that as well. Shontay, you did a little bit. No, they all did a great job. I was very pleased with the turnout and I think we're going to have a huge turnout when we actually cut that ribbon, so.
It's going to be a good time. And with that, with that, we have nothing further for tonight's agenda and no further actions to be taken, so we are hereby adjourned. And that is 7:22. She could have done it faster.